Commissioners Court, Brazos County will meet in regular session on June the 11th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. at Commissioners Court, Brazos County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item of the agenda is the invocation, pledge of allegiance to the US and Texas flag, Commissioner Walker, Alita.
Heavenly Father, we come together in your name, grateful for the opportunity to gather in unity. We thank you for the blessing of this day. We ask that you please keep our first responders safe as they work to protect us. We also humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom as we discuss the matters at hand. Grant us the clarity of thought and the compassion of heart to make decisions that honor you and benefit all. May your presence be felt among us throughout this meeting, guiding our words and our actions. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Second item of the agenda is the call for citizens' input and/or concerns. Cindy Wiley. Cindy.
I just wanted to go over something that's a very hot button right now in our elections. I did mention the Presley lawsuit, and that was about Dr. Presley finding algorithms that occurred in the electronic voting machines, and she was able to out 60,000 ballots and identified who they were, who they belonged to, including the county judge, commissioners, district court judges, and so forth. In the lawsuit, basically, one of her claims is that it violates the Fourteenth Amendment, which it sets up two different classes of voters, one being mail-in ballot voters that get a sequentially numbered mail-in ballot, and in-person voters who get a random number placed on their ballots. So the audibility is different in the two classes, and that's the Fourteenth Amendment, I mean, that's a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. And of course, at the GOP convention, Matt Rinaldi's ballot was outed, Colin Allred's ballot has been outed, and out of that reaction, we have the Secretary of State weighing in, and we have the Attorney General weighing in, both saying, oh, my gosh, we have to protect the secrecy of the ballot, which is true, but the greatest violation of that principle is the countywide voting setup, because it allows people to cross out of their precinct and go into other precincts, and you can reverse engineer the ballot. So my ask is that I ask you, our county judge and the commissioners, to please reconsider the validity of going back to precinct voting, because we'll all have the same precinct number on our ballots, and nobody can differentiate who went where or whose ballot is who. But the Secretary of State and the Attorney General, they put out both advisories, saying, okay, here's what we're going to do, people. We're going to have the election administrators and the county clerks, we're going to give you the authority to redact the precinct number, the polling location, the, and the random numbering that goes on your ballot for anybody that asks for a copy of the ballot images, which is completely wrong for them to do that, because that deprives the citizens of the ability to audit. So they're punishing us for inquiring. So the grassroots are very, very upset. I don't know how this is all going to fall out, but the Secretary of State does not have the authority to legislate law. Only our legislators can do this. So again, she just compounded the problem that already existed when she allowed all of our EAs to just randomly number using the systems. So I spoken to you before, Judge, and I told you, this is coming to a head. I don't know how this is all going to fall out, but there's going to generate lawsuits out of this. Citizens groups are going to rise up and say, you can't deprive us of that. So anyway, I just, you know, when we ask our people, convenience versus accuracy of your vote casted, that's the question that needs to be asked. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. I think that was the last one in that section. So we'll move on to presentation and discussion. Presentation and discussion of 2024 Chamber Day survey results by Glenn Brewer, President and CEO of Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce. Glenn.
Howdy, everybody.
Howdy.
I am Glenn Brewer, President and CEO of Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce. I say that so much, that's how I greet my grandchildren lately. They're not impressed either. Just want to say, first of all, thank you for having me. Appreciate it, Judge, Commissioners. A couple of quick thanks, I'm sorry Commissioner Berry's not here. I wanted to thank her for her participation in our Chamber DC/Washington delegation trip and for helping us out on our Board of Directors, and I also want to thank her and Commissioner Aldrich for their participation and help on our Legislative Affairs Committee as we work with our businesses to make this a better place to live, work, and play, and we appreciate your help and all your support. Turning in the business results survey from our March 28 Chamber Day, the results, very, very happy to report a successful Chamber Day. For those that don't know, a very quick recap on Chamber Day, this was our 16th annual Chamber Day. We had over 125 volunteers show up to participate. That's down from our pre-pandemic level still, but we're building back up to that, and we hope to get to that soon. But we have 125-plus volunteers divided into 50 teams. We give out maps of Brazos County in different sections, different streets. Each team has a map. People will say, I never got a visit on Chamber Day. Well, what ends up happening is the teams get the maps, they go out, and they basically go door-to-door, just walking in, knocking on the door of every business that they have on their map. They just go from business to business. The business might not be open yet. When they're coming there, there might be some reason that they didn't get in there, but they just go and knock on as many businesses, not chamber businesses or non-chamber businesses, just businesses, and they walk in, they tell them, we are thankful for you being here, we're thankful for what you do for our community, the employees that you hire, the taxes that you pay, the services you provide, we want to thank you for being in business in Bryan College Station, and that's what Chamber Day does. While you're visiting over 1,000 businesses, we hit 1,054 this year. We asked them to do a brief survey that we want to turn into Brazos County. We keep the survey brief, so we can get a lot of answers. We got 700, and basically 70 businesses answered the survey of the 1,000 businesses we walked into. I always say this, and that's up 40 from last year, which is great. When you walk into these businesses, it's not a scientific survey. You're walking in, you could be talking to a student from A&amp;M that's their first day on the job, and you walk in there and you want to ask them some questions, and then the very next business you go into, it could be a mom and pop that has been there for 60 years, and we will probably have both of those in here and everybody in between. But when you go into 1,000 businesses and you say, just tell me what you think about these questions, and you put all those answers together, and then you get that average result, you've probably got a pretty good idea of what businesses are thinking and what the possible disposition of they are in the coming year. So it's not a scientific survey, but I would say it's a pretty good idea on what's in the mind of businesspeople around Bryan College Station. So with that, I would like to have you look at your report. We're turning this into you, all the details here, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. You can dig as deep as you want into these numbers, but I would just like to point out some highlights, if I would, for what we're turning in. On the first page, one of the first questions we ask all these businesses is asking about last year. Compared to the previous 12 months, how have sales changed? Simple question, have sales increased, decreased, stayed the same, or no answer? And you can see this year in our survey, 49% of our businesses reported sales increasing from the previous year, 18% reported a decrease, 26 stayed the same, and less than 10% answered the question. That sounds like some pretty good numbers, so you look at the next page, and we have detail broken out by industry, and also broke out 2022 compared to 2023 compared to our survey in 2024, so that you can see some trends. And if you look at that specifically on the, how many of the businesses said they had an increase in sales? Well, in 2022, we had a 60% reported increase, 2023, 56%, and then in 2024, 49%. So you're seeing a trend downward over these three years. Now, 2022, those were some big numbers, because we were still coming out of COVID, and if you look at many, many years' surveys, the numbers were pretty high, but that is numbers going down. We don't ask any detail behind that, but we do talk to the people, and so you get anecdotal information from them as to what is happening, and there's definitely increased competition. This is a heavily small business survey that we're walking into. There's a lot of competition. Inflation has definitely hit all of our businesses, and of course, employment issues, and so it's just, it's been a tough time to be in business, but still, 49% reporting an increase is not bad. If you look down in the different industries, as you dig down, you can see, like, we had 200 responses from retail. Obviously, if you're going door-to-door, you're going to hit a lot of retail operations, a lot of restaurants, 145 restaurants surveyed. Their numbers were going down, just like the overall numbers, as you would expect with that type of competition. A couple of bright spots, construction, 71% of our construction businesses reported an increase in the previous sales, which is awesome, and 86% in information technology. So there are some bright spots when you dig down into the industry, but that's the question number one. Then we go on to our second, our other questions, and these are more, that's what happened in the past, now we want to know what's happening in the future. What's the mood of our business, the disposition? What are they looking forward to in the coming year? So we ask the 1,000 businesses we walked into, what do you expect our local economy to do in the future, in the coming year? What is your expectations? 63% said they expected an increase in the local economy, 9%, only 9% expected a decrease, about 1 in 5 said it would stay the same. You go to the next page to dig down into detail, well, how does that compare to previous years? Well, it's a slight drop. Back in 2022, 71% expected an increase, down the next year to 61, and then 63 this year. So that's pretty much about the same as last year, as people's expectations. You go down into some individual numbers, the energy industry obviously is the least optimistic, with only 33% expecting a better year. Back down to information technology with 86% is probably the highest as far as the expectation. There's 100% on the arts and culture museums, but there's only two responses to that, so I won't mention those as we go forward. But you can see the sentiment is still good. Onto the next question, very important to us at the Chamber and the county as well, employees. We ask those businesses, do you expect your number of employees to change over the coming year? We're happy that 40% of our businesses said they expect their employees to increase over the coming year. Only 4% expected a decrease, and about 50% said they expected to stay the same, and that was as of that March date. The individuals, as you look back, it's a slight drop in year-over-year. Interestingly, I saw the, on the government survey, they had the highest amount that expected an increase of 67% and the highest decrease of 33%. We only visited three government offices. I don't know if it was yours, Judge, or not, but, so we had two government offices expected an increase and one a decrease, but the manufacturing office was doing very, very well, with 83% expecting an increase in employees. Tourism and wholesales also were over 50% expecting an increase, so those are bright spots, looking for new employment. The next page, and this always requires a little explanation, because the question reads, how would you rate the quality of qualified applicants in our area for your type of business? Which we tried to tell them, it's not the amount of applicants, it's the quality of the applicants here locally. So we're trying to find out, can you get people locally, or are you looking outside the area to get quality applicants? And the good news there, 46% said the local applicants were good, 31 averaged, only 13% poor, 10% did not answer. And when you dig down into the details of that, you can see that probably the largest group that said that they were not finding the proper local applicants, and that was only 33% saying that, was in the manufacturing field, but that's down from 50% last year. So I think that the good news is we are finding high-quality local applicants for the businesses in our area. In interest of your time, I'll continue quickly, and then we can ask any questions or go into any detail later. One of my favorite questions, the quality of life, we just say, outside of business, how would you rate the overall quality of life in the Brazos Valley for you and your staff? Very happy to report, 85% said excellent or good, and I agree with them 100%. I'd like to find the 10 people that felt that it was poor, because I don't understand it, but 85% thought the quality of life in the Brazos Valley is excellent or good, and the details that follow, you can see that's pretty much consistent with the past couple of years. Continuing on to the next page, a good question, the quality of safety and security. We ask our businesses, compared to the past 12 months previous, how would you rate the quality of safety and security in your business neighborhood? Very, very happy to report that 91% said very safe or relatively safe quality of safety and security, and that's thanks to our first responders. We appreciate them very much. By the way, speaking of first responders, Thursday at 4:30 at Bombers Field, we're having our Community Softball Classic, where we're honoring our first responders and writing a big check to the 100 Club. It's not a commercial, it's probably not allowed, but that's just details of this question that I'm giving you here on security, that we're doing something for our first responders on Thursday, so we'll see you all out at Bombers Field to support our first responders. But that's also consistent with the past. And then a question we started asking last year, historically underutilized businesses, hub businesses, to your knowledge, is this business categorized as a historically underutilized business? And we're very happy that of the businesses we walk into, 11% said that they were hub qualifiable or were hub businesses. We had 48% said, no, they were not, and a possible place for an education opportunity for us, surprisingly, 41% did not know. Now, that, you're not talking to the owner every time, so I can understand someone not knowing, but 41% to me seems a little high not to know that, so maybe there's an educational opportunity for us to get the word out about hub businesses and hub servicable businesses. But we did have 11% said that they were. And then the final page of the report, we ask everybody, what are your business issues or what are your biggest concerns? You're in business, you've put a lot of money, time, effort into this, what are you worried about right now in the coming year? And pretty much the same as last year, oddly, by a wide, wide margin, the number one thing is general economy. That's what people are worried about, our businesses, and you can see number two is transportation. That has gone up. We're worried about our roads. The other ones, obviously taxation, government regulation, regulatory environment, and employment, are, those are the big five that people are worried about. So be happy to answer any questions or let you guys peruse this at your time, tell you how pleased we are for our partnership with the county and how much our businesses appreciate what you guys are doing for us to help us make this a wonderful place to live.
It's great information. Glenn?
Thank you, Judge.
Glad that you all go out and check with all the businesses and talk to them about it, and then you bring the information to us.
Well, and congratulations on the organization of that and all those volunteers and your staff that worked so hard on that every year. I know a lot of people that maybe, if you go to other towns our size, communities our size, I should say, they just don't have the active chamber or the force and numbers of volunteers and those willing to go out and do that. So congrats to everybody involved, and great job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I wanted to fill in a fact that Mr. Brewer left out, and that is, if you buy a ticket for the law enforcement event, you get to stay and watch the Bombers game afterwards.
That's absolutely free. Fire versus the police is what you're paying for, but then you get a Bombers game for free.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks for what you do, and I can't, I can't count the number of these I've participated in, but if you have not gotten out, been engaged, met with people, it's really, it's really wonderful to see the responses that people have, that you're coming to ask them about what's going on, just the fact that there are that many visits, and there are people, if you haven't been able to go out and spend a morning or an afternoon, or spend the whole day, do both sessions. It's a good way to get more engaged and familiar with our community businesses, and it's also a good way for you to have some fun getting to know some other people who are on your team, and those relationships make a difference, too. Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. We will move on to the presentation of veteran status report by Pam Robertson, Brazos County Veteran Service Officer.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Pam.
This report, we started in October, and the reason why is we, even though I started in June, we weren't getting VA decisions and reports back until October, so therefore, that's why we have that odd number. Right now, we have 1,528,936,000 veterans in Texas. 9,283 of those veterans live right here in Brazos County. For the last quarter, this office, the Brazos County VSO office, saw 632 veterans. So far this year, from January to May 31st, we have seen 1,151 veterans, and that totals 1,783 veterans that have come to our office here in the county for services.
Okay. I'm a little lost. What are the headings?
Yeah, for those, go back, yeah, I was going to ask the same question for that. So you have four columns. What are those four columns?
I'm sorry about that. They're right there. The number of scheduled appointments, the number of veterans who walked in.
So that's just a carryover from the prior page?
Yeah, just carried over to the next page.
Thank you.
Some we do Zoom calls with, over the phone, people that are disabled, that can't come in, we do, sometimes even go to their homes. So that was the total of all of those, and then it just carried to the next page.
And this is just specific to Brazos County?
Brazos County, mhm. These are veterans that utilize the Brazos VSO office.
Wow.
We have filed since October, 392 claims. We have 231, these are disability claims, 231 still open and 161 are closed. This is just a little chart we made to show that, you know, the veterans get rated for disabilities from 10% to 100%. They've also added 0%, but we didn't include those. So 16% of our veterans are at 10%, and if you go around the chart, and we also have 16% at 100%. When our veterans come in and we file claims for them, and they are denied the claims, we then go back and appeal, so they kind of work their way around the chart, we're trying to get them up as high as we can and get them the benefits they deserve. We have filed 83 appeals that we've actually been to Appeals Court for, and we've won 82 appeals.
That's pretty good odds.
And lost one. Thank you.
That's pretty good odds. Thank you for improving those people's results.
Thank you. Burial benefits here in the county, we have filed 30 claims, and the beneficiaries have The monthly DIC, which is the pension that a widower would receive or any other kind of compensation benefits from a veteran that passed, we've received $52,500 for those as well. So those are monthly payments coming in to these spouses or families. The veterans that utilize the VSO office alone, that does not include every veteran in the county, because I have no way to capture those numbers, but the ones that have utilized our VSO office bring in $402,388.50 a month into this county. We have collected $1,272,060.71 in retroactive benefits.
Brazos County?
Yes, the ones that have utilized our office.
Okay.
Okay, and what the retro benefit is, if someone has filed for a claim, they were denied, we went back and appealed it, we ask for them to pay them all the way back to the original claim date. Okay? We always go back and ask for that. I always say, all they can tell us is no, right? Okay, well, did I? Uh-oh. Okay, let me get back through here. And then it goes to an A. Well. Some of the pages are believed cut off, but I'll go ahead and continue with what I have. The Texas Veterans Commission did just put out a report, and it says that the VA has spent $38,977,000 on medical care for our veterans here in Brazos County. So that is the, we have community care. Because we live so far from Temple, our veterans have the right to ask for community care, which they send them to a local medical facility, and those are the payments that are being made out for those, and for the VA clinic and medications. We also have three urgent cares here in the county that our veterans are able to utilize as well at no cost to them. We have, the total expenditure for the Brazos County that the VA has spent is $141,519,000. That's how much the VA pays out for our veterans in this community, and that includes everything, the monthly compensations, burial, education, and those types of things. This year, we are very proud to announce that we received a grant from Texas Veterans Commission. We received $10,000 to go towards helping veterans seek employment, and, well, it's $5,000 for that, and then $5,000 for veterans to seek counseling. How we're going to use those grants, we're still ironing that out, but we're very proud of that. And does anybody have any questions?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned those grants. I was going to, I was going to make sure you remember that. Thank you for working with the grant, the county's grant writer, to get those finished. Pam, you just hit the ground running with this position. It really needed to be served the way you're serving it, and I'm just so proud of the job you're doing. And, you know, you see the numbers on the screen there, it really hits, my gosh, in the last part of last year, 632 people over three months. You've been busy.
Yes, we're very busy, but we're honored.
Yeah. Well, I know you are, but we really appreciate the work you all are doing.
Well, thank you. Well, I couldn't do it alone. I have Ben, our assistant, Ben, and Katie helps out with, is helping with the grant and...
Sorry, who's Ben?
Ben Holmes, he's sitting back, he's hiding in the back. He's our assistant.
Thank you, Ben.
He's our gunny sergeant. He's a Marine. He answers the phones, deals with everyone coming in and out of the office, responds to emails, so I'm not alone. We have a good team going. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you so much.
We've come a long way in your time.
Thank you.
So thank you.
I will tell you that when we were vetting who might be the next VSO, I had Tom Marty and Judge Langley helping in the interview process. You rose to the top. They both knew you from the...
Volunteer.
Volunteering and the things that you had been able to get for veterans as a volunteer, and you came with the highest credentials, and you proved it. You're a great... And you came with the highest credentials. And you, you proved it. You're a great hire.
Well, thank you so much.
Glad to have you on board.
If you could work on that win average for the appeals, that'd be great. But other than that...
I just want to remind everybody, Friday's Flag Day. So we're gonna be putting some flags out here. And also, it's the Army's 249th birthday this Friday.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pam.
Great report.
Yeah, I would suggest to you, when Pam got started here, gosh, what, almost nine months ago?
In June, yes. Not even a full year. Wow.
You know, I could walk in and have an opportunity to visit with her. Hey, how are things going? What's going on? Now, if I want to do that, I need to schedule an appointment.
Yeah.
So that says a lot.
It's about 10 to 15 veterans face-to-face daily. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will consider and take action on Genes 4 through 22. Number four is request approved for wire transfer of $8,144,897.74 to HHSC's funds for PGY4, Advanced Comprehensive Health Increase Reimbursement Program, the CHIRP Fund, for qualifying hospitals.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is approval of the following job descriptions.
Motion to table A through D. Judge, I just, it's my own fault. I'd like to run the traps on this a little bit more before I vote on it, if y'all, if y'all oblige me.
I don't know of any reason why it would need to be passed today, so I'm fine with table A.
So do we need a second?
So a motion to table, you go ahead.
Second.
Second. Okay. Motion is second to table, item five. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is authorization of county justice assigned basic plan for the Brazos County Interjuror Statute of Emergency Management Plan.
Move for approval.
Oh, sorry.
We'll go ahead and get motion seconded. Yeah, move for approval on that. And then we had Kathy Vins, I believe was number six.
Item number six.
Was it second?
Move for approval?
You moved, oh, you moved on six. Did I? I thought I heard you second.
Not only second, number five. I didn't...
Okay, well, I need a second.
Oh, what the heck. I'll, I'll go for it.
Okay. Motion made seconded. Then on six, Kathy.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I briefly looked over this plan. It's 49 pages for the emergency plan for the county, and I would just like the reassurance that all the Commissioners have looked at this 49-page document. I was unaware, Judge, that you're responsible for the coming together of all these different organizations and planning and coordinating everything. I am overwhelmed by the amount of responsibility you take in this plan. I am surprised when I looked at some of these organizations that they, these different departments were already in charge of some emergency services. And I know back in January, we had that big freeze, and Commissioner, you brought up the topic of no services for people to provide warming centers, and apparently, there have been things in place already. So I'm anxious to hear that the Commissioners have all been educated about all these different organizations, how they fall into place in the case of an emergency, and what the plan is.
Okay. Okay, now discussion on the emergency plan.
Kathy brings up a great point. The county judge is really, in all, in all the counties in Texas, have a massive amount of responsibility. That's absolutely true. And so definitely, this plan showed that, and I have no questions about the plan. The questions I had were answered, so.
Okay. And of course, the county judge oversees outside the corporate city limits. Then it's the mayors that have a similar plan inside the city limits of, of counties. So this, this plan is really for outside the city limits. That's where the county judge has jurisdiction. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is approved non-financial memorandum of understanding between Brazos County Detention Center and BVCOG, Workforce Solutions Brazos Valley Board for Adult Education and Literacy Program, from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval of amendment number one to contract 22-144 for innovative transportation services Brazos County to renew for another term to amend pricing.
Move for approval, that amendment?
Second.
Motion made seconded. I think Kathy, you want to speak on this?
Yes, I would like you to go into this contract a little bit and explain to me when the previous contract was signed, because a 50% increase in the cost seems exorbitant compared to what the average person is increasing their incomes. It went from $10,000 a month to $15,000 a month, and I would like you to explain that for us.
So this, this is, this is with innovative services. It's the contract with the outside consultant that, that actually helped us pass that $100 million bond issue. And while he's, he had a role early on, and getting that bond issue passed, his work has now begun. He is, he is involved in all four of the projects we've got going on with Tech Dot, and we've got two other projects that I think will begin over the next couple of three years. So his work has, is actually more today's, probably more than 50% more than what it, what the original contract was.
And the date of the original contract?
I can't understand.
When was the original contract? Ma'am, you'll have to come up to the...
Yeah. I don't know. Charles would probably have to pull the original contract. It's been two or three years ago. I don't, I don't remember. I don't have it in front of me, but we signed a contract with him. I don't make three or four...
So the number of contract, the number of projects he's overseeing have increased enough to justify a 50% increase?
Up, up until we passed that bond issue, there were really no projects other than working, moving, and talking with Tech Dot and trying to make sure that we would get potential money if we actually did projects, and then working through with the cities and Tech Dot to determine what projects were important and a priority. But the actual work on those projects didn't begin until recently. And that's, once those contracts were let, and they have been, or at least four of the projects have been let, that's when his real work begins, and that's when the need to pay him, to compensate him for the work he's doing.
If memory serves me correctly, I believe it was about almost three years, almost three years ago, when we entered into our working agreement with ITS.
Yeah, it's probably been three years. I don't, I don't remember exactly, but... Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of change order number two, CIP 23-572, Architect for Jail Shower, renovations for TDLR, planned review in the amount of $450. This change order will bring the design contract total of $52,120.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval of agreement with 20, agreement 24-121 for Image Learning LLC with Brazos County Juvenile.
Move, I'm sorry. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Kathy, I think you want to speak on this one, too.
Yes. Can you explain what that program is? Is it brand new? What areas does it cover? What it's including?
I think, you want, you want to get up and speak, Glenn?
This is for our juveniles. It's a software for our juveniles on learning in the juvenile services, JJAEP. That's our academy program for the kids that go to school there. In 1996, we had to have an academy program for those kids that are expelled from public school, a mandatory expulsion. Or they're also kids in our, that our judge orders into the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm just glad after all of the emergency management acronyms that were in that report that...
Yeah, yeah.
You did say Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Plan. The acronyms are...
The JJ.
Yeah. JJAEP.
Motion carries. Number 11 is consider and take action on the Brazos WiFi Utility Permit to Install Road Boars Under Lakefront Drive and Timber Ridge Drive, along with laying 4,150 feet of cable within the right-of-way of Dice Lane for Internet Service sites located Precinct 2.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is consider and take action on Brazos WiFi Utility Permit to Install Road Bore under Willowbrook Drive, Tranquility Crest, and Harvey Ranch Road, along Hardy Weeden Road, along, along with laying 6,400 feet of cable within the right-of-way of Internet Service sites located Precinct 2.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion.
I just wanted to say that there's boring going on in Precinct 2, but not to be considered that Precinct 2 by any way is boring.
Not with an additional two miles of infrastructure for high-speed internet. It's getting more and more interesting.
Yeah.
Yep. And they just need to do the same thing in Precinct 4, I digress.
It'll be boring out there, too.
Yeah, well, that's okay, as long as they're putting in internet and Wi-Fi out in those outer reaches.
Did we vote on that? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Sorry for the distraction, Judge.
Non-motion carries. Number 13 is request permission to enter private property owned by Kenneth Jones located on Jack Creek Road. County will repair damaged drop inlet cover and install a new safety cage and rip wrap around the drop inlet sites located Precinct 2.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approve of treated report for April of 2024.
Move for approval, sorry.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approve of expenditure journal entry for Brazos County FY 23-24, March 2024, and May 2024, cash contribution $44,845.22 to CSCD Specialty Court Program.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is approve requested for tax refund application for Maria Alma Villarreal and Brian Schaefer in the amount of $94.06 pursuant to Tax Code Section 33.011.
That was 94, not 900? 94. I think you said 900.
94, '06.
'06.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following...
Move for approval, A and B.
Second.
Motion made seconded. And B. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is budget amendments, FY 23-24, budget amendments 35.01.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is personnel change status.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is payment of claims, claims being paid by Brazos County, claim number 8203178 through claim number 8203341, and claim number 9201345 through claim number 9201423.
Move approval of payment of claims.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number, we go skip down to number 23, is acknowledgment of the FY 20, 23, 24 budget to actuarial by fund as of June 5, 2024, and acknowledgment of FY 23, 24 contingency budget to actuarial by fund as of June 5, 2024. Number 24, juvenile directors report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We have 31 juveniles in detention, 23 males, 8 females, and we have 34 on electronic monitor.
Thank you, Glenn. 25, sure support on inmate population. Chief.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This morning, our population is 853. We have 716 males, 137 females, and there are 35 on electronic monitor.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. 26 is announce of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, I neglected last week to mention this, but I just, you know, our prayers and our thoughts go out to the folks of Van Zent County. There's a longtime county commissioner, Virgil Melton, and he was actually killed week before last in an accident driving with his wife, who was in critical condition. A tree fell on their vehicle, just the strangest of accidents. But one of the gentlemen I'm in the VG Young Institute Leadership Academy with knows him well, and they're all just shocked by that. I imagine losing one of us up here. And so thoughts and prayers out for them. And I just wanted to call out the road and bridge department. We've been wearing them out. We had these high-water incidents back-to-back, really, a lot of damage to infrastructure, a lot of trees and branches down. We've got a, we've got an ongoing issue we're gonna, in the future, really have to look at as far as drainage and stuff, particularly in that 1179 and 21 corridors. But they, you know, I do have calls right now where people would like a branch trimmed or this or that, but they're having to basically triage everything. These, these folks are coming to work every day and answering the calls that are coming through me, and I know there's a lot through me, and I know some citizens are reaching out directly to them. But they're really doing a great job. And as you go around, if you drive in surrounding counties and look at the roads and the conditions of the roads in those counties, or the maintenance of those roads and, you know, branches trimmed, cleared after a storm, Brazos County Road and Bridge is second to none. They do a great job. Maybe not, you know, for our individual claim. You might want your thing handled that day, but they're handling five other things that are very dangerous and then getting to yours. But just patience with them as they handle all these calls, and just wanted to pat them on the back today. Really, really tell them, thanks for all of your hard work, especially after these storms.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge, I will be zooming into next Tuesday's meeting. I will leave it up to your imagination as to where I will be, but I am wearing a very realistic hint as to where that would be today with my attire. But I also wanted to call to everybody's attention, the Health Coalition meeting yesterday, there was a lot of information given out, and particularly wanted to call people's attention, if you'll go out to the Health District's website, there are a number of surveys that they're doing out there. Two, one in particular, particular on mental health, and it's completely anonymous, confidential, but gathering data and information about mental... but gathering data and information about mental health and mental health care services in our community, I think is very big. While you're out there, take a look at all the other things that are going on. This is not the same Brazos County Health District that we had five years ago. It's very active, it's very dynamic, the number of programs and the support of quality of life in our community. They're doing a great job over there and I would like to also call to the attention that over that four-year period of time with the expansion of the services that they offer, they've been predominantly grant-funded and for the last four years, none of the three, both of the cities nor Brazos County, has been asked for an increase in funding directly from the Health District as they have significantly expanded program services and things that they do for quality of life in Brazos County. So they're reaching out to the community to find out more of what they can do. Please help them out in giving them an appropriate assessment with particular regard to mental health. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you say thank you?
Okay, the other thing is, it's posted on the agenda of the regular meeting for Commissioners' Courts have been canceled from July sixteenth because of the North and East Conference that's here locally that week. Anything else? Hearing nothing, we will move back up and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Code five-five-one point zero seven four to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, assignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of emergency management coordinator position and certainly the HR, attorneys, head, Sheriff, Commissioners' Court, Michelle. Okay, we're coming back out of executive session. The time is eleven twenty and there's no action to be taken. Next item is to adjourn.